Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, July 28th, 2020. Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Goulamback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present. Item number one, Michigan Sycamore Historic District.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number two, draft of Carriell's Law, Duty to Intervene Law.
Items open?
This item is open. It is my understanding that at the request of the council president, there are three speakers and they have worked with Malcolm Urther from council staff to speak on this item. Malcolm, if you could patch the three speakers in and they are aware of the three-minute time limit that we have and thank you for joining us today.
Yes, sir. I guess speakers are connected and I would defer to the council president as his item if you would like to or ask to file the item on behalf of Sarah and would introduce the topic.
Thank you. That would be up to the chair. Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have recently been approached by a team that have been working with Carriell Horn for a law in which they have turned it as Carriell's Law, which is basically the duty to intervene. We currently have a policy. One of the items that I asked to be opened later and I'll just put it all lump it all into one is item 17 in which I have asked Corporation Counsel to opine on not only the difference between the law and the policy so that we may begin this discussion, if not the writing possibly of a draft of a law of the duty to intervene. In the meantime, several persons did contact me as I also suggested that they talk to other council members to educate them on what their proposal is so that as we have this public discourse that there will have already been some education process that has gone forward with my colleagues. And so I did suggest to them that if they wanted to present to this committee, I did invite them to come to this committee and I know their time is limited, so I will not continue to talk. I'll give them, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you to call them for them to present to this body.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for that introduction and you're correct. I know this specific group has met with myself yesterday and I know several other council members. So we certainly look forward to hearing what else there is to say. So Malcolm, if you can start patching each of the three in and having them start, that would be great and appreciated.
Yes, sir. They're already on. We are joined by Terry Dreya and of course Carriell Horn. You can begin statements when you're ready. However, I do ask that when you speak for the first time, please state your name for the record. This will be a big help for staff creating a transcript for the hearing impaired later after the meeting.
Hi, my name is Carriell Horn. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Carriell Horn, I am a mother, grandmother, former police officer, advocate and activist on human rights issues, specifically police brutality. I was a police officer from 1988 until 2008. In 2008, I was by first thing, Michael West. So I've been fighting against the police brutality and as we know now, Marty Gugino, he was pushed by Buffalo police officers and the police union encouraged officers to go. When the officers were being charged, they encouraged officers to go in support of these officers who pushed this 75-year-old man down. So for me, I think that's part of the problem with the union supporting bad officers. Now, I know people are, some people are pro-union. I'm not against anyone. I'm against what's wrong. And so instead of keep complaining about what's wrong, I thought of a solution which is Carriell's Law. Had George Floyd had Carriell's Law and he would not be dead today. So what I am encouraging is that you look, support Carriell's Law. And what Carriell's Law does is protect officers who stop other officers when they are being abusive. We know things can happen. There are a lot of good police officers. So I'm not anti-cop, just like I said, anti-police brutality. So I think that, you know, the problem is police brutality. The solution is Carriell's Law. So I would really appreciate your support and I thank you for letting me speak today.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. And Terry, if you would like to go next.
Terry, it looks like you might not have had your headphones on when the chair was speaking. You've been invited to speak now if you can hear us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there we go. Technology, yes. So hi, my name is Terry Watson. I am the founder of Strategies for Justice and really talk about Carriell's Law, the six items more specifically because as we mentioned before, there is a difference between policy and law. But the most important piece to this is that the six items are really about looking at what exactly we should be doing in regards to intervention. So first, a little background is that, you know, I come from a historic police family. My great-grandfather was the first black police officer to have a full career in the city of New York and my uncle Samuel J. Battle was the first lieutenant of the NYPD. So I've tried, so when I look at the law like this, it's really to protect our good police officers and that's the first thing that I want to mention. So the first item is that to establish a duty to intervene, anytime you, a police officer sees another police officer abusing a citizen, they will have a mandated duty to intervene. That's the first item of this law. The second item of this law is to establish consequences for anyone who fails to meet that duty. And so if you are a sworn law enforcement professional, then you have the duty to make sure that our citizens are safe, even if that means interfering with another law enforcement professional. The third item is to protect any law enforcement professional who do intervene from retaliation of being fired or being reassigned. That part of the law makes sure that if you have a good police officer that steps up and intervenes when someone is being abused, that police officer is protected from retaliation. The fourth item of the law talks about establishing consequences for those who falsify reports in order to use it as retaliation. To make sure that when a police officer intervenes to help a citizen, that any falsified documents or falsified reports is met with the same consequences as if they did not intervene. Now, the fifth and the sixth part of this law really goes to the conversation here at Buffalo because it would require some conversations in regards to cost to the logistics. So the fifth part of the law is to, one, if some individual violates Carriell's Law, again, either failing to intervene or retaliating against the one who intervenes, that person would be terminated for the position and they would have to enter the registry of Carriell's Law. Now, the registry, again, it can't really be a city thing. It would have to be a state registry because obviously the purpose of the registry is that that person cannot then go to another police department to be rehired in that state. The second part of item five is that if a department violates Carriell's Law, either in falsifying the report or retaliating against a person who intervened, then during the next collective bargaining agreement, a representative from Carriell's Law would be present to address that violation. And the sixth and final piece of this law would be to look at a restorative justice approach for any police officer who intervenes in good faith to stop abuse. If they are retaliated against or they do lose their job or lose their pension in retaliation, that that person would be made whole and their justice would be restored. So that's the whole gist of Carriell's Law in those six items. Again, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for Buffalo to show the world exactly how police can be reimagined. So I would then turn it over to Dreya.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dreya Denor. I am a citizen of Buffalo, born and raised, and I am a full-time music artist. And I'm also the founder and owner of Feed Buffalo, which is the first organic and halal food pantry here. I'm also a mother of five, like Carriell Horn. So this issue feels really close to my heart. You know, just because Carriell did something that we, I think as a nation wished that the cops who murdered George Floyd and the cops who killed Breonna Taylor, we can go on and on. We wish that those cops that were present would have done what Carriell had done 14 years ago. And I think it's kind of a shame that we need something like a law because I think there are policies in place in many cities and states at this time, you know, like a duty to intervene policy, but it's not something that's necessarily enforceable by law in terms of there being consequences if a cop does not intervene or and also in terms of there not being something in place that will protect those cops who do stand up. We've watched a cop, a former cop, Carriell Horn, lose so much because of the decision that she made and a lot of things that have happened to her should not have ever happened. I think Buffalo, again, has a beautiful opportunity. Like Buffalo is known for a lot of things, namely being a place that people came to to obtain freedom. People would come here from all parts of the world to get something. So Buffalo serves as a lighthouse, if you will, for what the rest of the country is going to do. And I think we have a wonderful opportunity to be the first to actually put this duty to intervene policy in place as a law and protect those cops who do good like Carriell did. It's important to note several things that there, she never had one suspension or sighting at all for before any of this stuff happened in all of her 19 years of working. No problems at all. She was a stand-up person. She was a stand-up cop. And the decision that she made, she didn't do it because it was a part of her policy. She didn't do it because it was a law. She didn't do it because she was trying to be famous, but she did it simply because it was the right thing to do. And I think when, there are many cops like Carriell who probably want to do the right thing but are afraid of what the consequences would be, not only because of what we've seen happen to Carriell, but just because I think people are just scared because of talk. You just don't want to cross that blue line or the blue code. You don't want to go against it. So I think people should be rewarded for doing what is right. I think they should be encouraged to do what is right and rewarded for that. And I think they should not have to fear consequences like losing their job, losing their peace, losing their home, worried about their children being police because of what has been done. So I think it's important for me to advocate that Carriell's Law, we named Carriell's Law because it honors somebody while she is alive. I think too often we wait till people die and we write about them, wait till we see a movie about them and then we want to say, oh, this person is from Buffalo. We have a wonderful opportunity to honor that person now while she lives. And I think Buffalo should be the first place to do that. And I don't think we should wait another 14 years to do it. So I'm just here to encourage everybody to advocate for Carriell's Law, to pass Carriell's Law, that you all will vote yes to pass it, that it will be considered, you know, official legislation. And I think that you will see that you will be the first to lead the rest of the country to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the three speakers that were speaking on this today. Thank you all for coming in. Before I pass it back to Council President Pridgen, I just wanted to say it's my, it's my understanding and I know the Buffalo police have talked with us when we ask questions that there's a policy or procedure for, to have a duty to intervene and that by passing a law, then it would change it from a policy procedure to a, to a law in the city of Buffalo Charter because when you could have different administrations, different commissioners, policies and procedures could change. But if it's a law, then that couldn't be changed. So I know there's some other items too and I'm happy that Terry pointed out the item about the registry would need to be passed at the state because if the city, if the city of Buffalo terminated someone for that reason, there's no reason the Batavia or Rochester or Syracuse Police Department couldn't hire them. We have no control over what they do. So I think that's a smart approach to do that specific part statewide because as everyone knows, Buffalo can't pass laws for other need for Rochester, Syracuse, et cetera. But thanks again for coming. And now I'm going to pass it back over to Council President Pridgen.
I don't know, Mr. Chair, if any of the colleagues had anything they wanted to say. So I'll wrap up if they, if they did.
Councilmember Wyatt and then Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank those individuals who are supporting Carriell. I think injustice was done to her those 14 years ago. I know that there's a policy in place, but it seems as though that policy failed her. And I know we are working, I'm working with council president to hopefully get a reinvestigation and for you to be made whole. I think it's the right thing to do. Those who think that it's not the right thing to do, I don't know what planet they're on. I don't know if they're paying attention to what's going on in the country. But 14 years ago, you did the right thing and it's looked at and as a heroic effort today. But like what happened with Karl and Kaepernick, you know, everybody's cheering him now, but when he did it a couple of years ago, they looked upon him and marked him. But I think that if we want to get better policing, we do have to protect those officers who take a stand like you. We do have to make sure that they are comfortable taking that stand because some of them, when you cross that blue line, things happen just like what happened to you. I read your statement and to me, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but from what I read, it seems as though that there was a plot in place from that very beginning to undermine and have you not be a police officer. That's just from what I read. And I'm not, again, I'm not a lawyer. I don't have any different information, but I have been in the process with EEOC claims. And sometimes when you read that text, it tells a story that others won't speak to because they are part of the system that doesn't want to see you made whole. But I wholeheartedly support this effort as well as the effort to make you whole. So you have my vote and whatever we can do to be a part of making that happen, you have my word. Thank you, Chair.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Like you, I met with the group yesterday to discuss Carriell's Law. And if you take away the personality or the individual that's in front of us today and you just look at the law itself and the merits of the law, I don't think you can find anything wrong with that law. Take away a name, take away an incident, just the fact that there is a time where an officer should intervene when he's seen that police are working or doing things outside the scope of the law. If you see somebody doing wrong, you should do right. And that police officer that does the right thing, he should be protected. And I think all of us, I mean, it's just common sense. You're there to protect and serve. You see an injustice. You see police working outside the scope of the law. You should intervene. You should be protected. That police officer should pay consequences. Who can say no to that? That's just common sense. So I support this law. And as far as Carriell Horn, I'm a former police officer. 25 years in the Buffalo Police Department. I came on as a result of discrimination within the Buffalo Police Department. I came on as a result of Judge Curtin's order that at one point, the city of Buffalo, the police department were discriminating against people of color. We have seen that happen. To deny that is denying reality. And so I've seen it. I've seen the culture. I'm not painting everybody with the same brush. There are good police officers, overwhelmingly good police officers, but there are bad cops and I think we have to admit it at some point. We've seen it on television. We've seen it on video. We've seen it on Facebook. That is the reality we have to deal with. That's a part of the culture that we have to get out of the Buffalo Police Department, out of every police department in the city and in the state and in this country. So I am for police reform. When we talk about on the national level, on the state level, on the local level, I am for police reform because I understand some of the culture that we had. I think Buffalo's come a long ways. I think back then, there's, the department is more diverse now than ever before. There are more African-Americans. There are more women. There are other minorities in it. It is more diverse. So I'm encouraged. The fact that we're looking at reforming certain things, I think is great. We'll continue to work with the police union. We want to raise the level of professionalism within the Buffalo Police Department because that only engenders trust from the public. When you have a police department that is functioning, that is, that is transparent, that is accountable, the public begins to trust those police officers. And when they begin to trust the police officers, they begin to cooperate with the police officers as well. They start providing information. They're no longer afraid to approach the beat cop or the patrol officer and talk to them. That is what we're trying to get back to. I don't want to paint all the police officer with a bad brush. Now, as far as Carriell Horn, I believe she should be made whole. Absolutely. And when I say whole, I don't mean to make her 20 years of service. If she was made whole, she'd get 32 years of service, not 20 years of service. If you ask Carriell Horn, would she have retired after 20 years? She probably said, no, I would have maxed out on my pension. I would have worked to 32. To make her whole means that she would have to get paid until she's 32 years in the Buffalo Police Department to max out on her pension. She was fighting just to get 20 years. She was short by, I don't know, months or maybe a year. But to me, to make her whole, to make an injustice right, she would have to be made whole with 32 years. That is my feeling personally for her to get made whole. Now, I'm not talking about the merits of the case today. I'm not going to get into the merits. Hopefully at some point, we'll know the merits of the case. But my feeling right today is that she should be made whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Next up is Councilmember Wingo.
Good, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're talking right now regarding Carriell's Law and I am absolutely and emphatically in support of the duty to intervene. Carriell, I've said this in the past and I'll say it again. A person is alive because of Carriell Horn. Her jaw was broke. She had left that situation with injury because she saved a man's life. Now, that duty that she felt in her heart at the time was not a policy. Let's make that clear. She did it anyway. And now she wants to protect people who feel the same way in their heart. Now, there comes a time when a police officer has to exercise excessive force. But in this instance, we had an officer who looked at the situation, assessed the situation and had determined that this situation does not call for the level of force that was being executed at the time. Carriell was a good officer in that instance when she intervened to try to make sure that Mr. Neal lived and he's alive today to testify to that fact. Now, as it relates to her pension, I don't have the authority. But if I did have the authority, she would have her pension. And I like what my colleague David Rivera said. I love it to death. I love it to death that we're going to make her whole. Give her 32 years. But this body doesn't have that authority. I wish we did. If we had this authority, I think when Councilmember Pridgen presented this several years ago, they would have voted in that direction. And if we had that authority to this day, I also believe that myself and the majority of my colleagues would also agree that she would get restored as it relates to her pension. But we can't do that. I wish that we could. God knows, I wish that we could. But there's this one piece in that Carriell did not get her pension and that is where we are right now here today. Had Carriell gotten her pension, say, and this is not to say that she would not be fighting as vehemently or emphatically today, but had Carriell not gotten her, if she had have gotten her pension a decade ago or 15, 14 years ago, maybe we would not be discussing this duty to intervene today. So I'm grateful that we're having the discussion. I'm grieved because Carriell has not received her pension. The state comptroller says in an article written a few days ago that he can't help her get her pension. But there has to be something that can be done. I mean, there has to be some way that she can be made whole. Now, I understand that Carriell is an upstanding citizen. I personally have had conversations with Carriell Horn and she, she, she's one of those people who, you know, she has that kind of spirit that she's a sweethearted person and you could feel when you speak with her why she felt the need to intervene. She's just a nurturer by, 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 by her natural nurturer. But of course, I am not discussing any of the merits to why she was terminated or why she was fired in the first place. Again, a lot of us are from the outside looking in. We are not investigators. We are not prosecutors. We are not internal affairs. So I'm not even going to try to act like I have the credential. I think the only one who has an attorney degree in this form right now is Corporation Counsel and Joe Farrelletto, our chairman. They're the only two folks in here who has the legal background to actually be able to decipher any merits of this case in a legal, in a legal way. But I'm not discussing that. All I know is that a man is alive because of Carriell and to that, the city of Buffalo ought to be thanking her because she is the reason why we're having this conversation right now. And if it was not for individuals and citizens like Carriell who continue to press issues of that that are necessary, when would these, when would these issues be spoken about? And again, Mr. Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I really appreciate my colleague, Mr. Rivera, his comments. If we're going to make her whole, somebody find her 32 years of pension money somewhere. I mean, I don't have the power to do it, but someone please find this woman her pension and so she can live out the rest of her life, you know, economically sound. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, I mean, I know Councilmember Wingo made a comment, but I wanted to. Ask the question, I believe we have a question on the table that we're asking Corporation Counsel. To look into if we have the authority. We are not aware of that as of yet. Is that correct? I don't believe we have the answer to that as of yet.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember, if you could, I don't. I was breaking up, I didn't hear your question, I don't know if that's my computer, if it's your computer, but if you can. Restate what you were asking, and it could be mine.
I was just asking the question, though, Councilmember Wingo said we didn't have the authority, and I said. I believe we have a question on the table. In which Corporation Counsel is investigating to see if we have the authority, because as of right now. We understand that we may not, but we don't know that for a fact. Um, as it relates to the law as of yet, I think that's on the table, correct?
Mr. Chair, it, it is on the ta, it's item number six. That is, uh, asking Corporation Counsel. Um, to give us a written opinion. Of who has authority, if we don't have authority, or basically, what is our authority? As a council, what is the authority of the city, uh, to be able to do anything?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Wingo.
I, I, I absolutely agree, and thank Councilmember Wyatt for bringing that up. Uh, listen, I'm praying. I'm praying that we do, because if we do, I believe this will be a closed chapter, and we will move forward, uh, in that vein, but if, hey. If Corporation Counsel comes back and says we have the authority, then, then, then let us move forward swiftly. To act on that authority, should we have that authority. I want to make sure that I'm perfectly clear. Uh, with that statement, that if we, if it is founded, that we have that authority. Then yes, this will be moved on swiftly, I'm pretty sure of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other? Comments, questions from my colleagues? If not, we will.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask. Thank you. I would like to ask Corporation Counsel when we can anticipate a written, uh, opinion.
Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon. My understanding is we should get something sometime closer to August fourth.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Majority Leader, do we have a motion? Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to sum, sum this up, and thank you all for your comments. Uh, Councilmember Wingo did talk about, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Um, you know, I put forth a resolution to look at this. You know, there's some who say the common council is just reacting to the pressure, that, that's not true. We've been on this, we've been asking, we've been inquiring. Um, I took it very personally. Um, and not only from the point of being, um, a council member, but from being a pastor in the community. And I've gathered with pastors, we met, we, um, met with ministry, we, we've done a lot. But this is the most attention. That this issue has received. Throughout the entire time. So some people who may think that we are simply reacting. Uh, to the recent, uh, requests, it's not true. But it is true that this has helped. That the, the, the. The temperature in the country has helped to bring this to the forefront. Um, I want to be clear about that. This is the furthest that we've gotten even discussing it. In this way, um, in this city and, and on this council. You know, the, we tell people, especially people in the street. Um, if you, if you see something, say something, intervene, basically, if you. Uh, we, we hear all the time, you, if you saw a crime, you ought to say it. Every time there is a, uh, murder on television, we tell people, if you know something. Call this number, basically intervene, get involved. At the end of the day, if you're a school teacher. And you see another school teacher harming a child. And you do nothing. You probably will not keep your job. Police have. The highest level of authority to detain a person. To stop their movement. And this is not, and I want to be clear, because there are those who benefit. From trying to make this seem like this is a fight. Between police and citizens. I don't approach it like that. I've said a thousand times, I want every police officer to go home alive. And I want every citizen who has an interaction with police to go home alive. That, that's my goal in all this. So those who just want to keep people on both sides. Because I've heard from police officers who have said, I, I don't have any problem with it, but I can't say anything, and I got that, I get it. But at the end of the day, those of us who are elected can say something. And so, um, as, as we, we met with the team, you know, a, a duty to intervene. Protects that officer, and let's not miss that, I don't want to miss that point. That officer who says, dag on it, I'm looking at something and this is not right. We, we had one of the persons involved in, uh, the Cario Horn situation. Who ended up later. Being testified against. Some incident with BB guns and, like, and just a long record. What would have happened? If somebody had have saw the actions of that officer. And said, this is not right, and did not have to worry about losing their job. Did not have to worry about being disciplined for doing their job. So there's some who say, you know, right now, police aren't doing their job. I got a call from somebody, said, well. They're riding past parties and they're saying they're not going to do anything because of protests. You don't want to do anything, don't do anything. But at the end of the day, that's your job, and it shouldn't be a threat, or you shouldn't be able to threaten public safety. Because people want a better system. That's all people are calling for, honestly. Now, there might be some who are way out there that I can't even agree with. At the end of the day, I don't want to see the city run by security guards. No, but I do want to see a policy or a law, I do want to see reforms that make sense. So that police don't go home and, and become alcoholics because they're stressed out and people are not afraid of police when they're behind them. And that happens by hard work, but to suggest. That, uh, police are not doing their jobs because we're trying to work on better models. Is unfortunate, but for some people, it's expected. But I don't think it should be the end. So, uh, Mr. Chair, with that being said, I know that this. The law, I mean, and I want to be clear with the public, there is a suggestion for a law because. There is no law for this council to vote on at this time. That law would have to be drafted through council. It would also have to be approved as the form. Some of what is requested in this, and one of my colleagues brought it up, I think it was the chairman. That some of this is not city, it is, uh, state law. And so, Mr. Chair, I am, we are drafting right now a resolution. To ask Corporation Counsel, and this has to happen, so those who think it's being delayed, it's not being delayed, it has to be in the right form. To ask Corporation Counsel to look at what has present, been presented to us. And then to respond in writing of what portions we can do without state law, what portions we can. So that if this council, um, is going to write a law. And, and I, I am one, and I'll say it publicly, who is not afraid, uh, to move this toward a law. Toward a law, that we have the proper information. We have a, a break coming up in the month of August. Unfortunately, that resolution has to be, or fortunately is the process, has to be presented to the council. So that the Corporation Counsel, uh, can be given direction to act. Um, so we hope to have that filed by the end of this week. Um, so that, um, we can begin to look at what has been presented to us. And then if this council, or at least, um, um, someone, and I'm telling you right now, I'm, I'm ready to write. Uh, is, is moves for, we know what we can do and what we can't do, uh, as far as this law. But, uh, like many of my colleagues, I'm a supporter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and just to follow up on what Council President Pridgen was talking about, if in fact, this is a, an, an actual law that the city's voting on. If there's certain items that aren't included in it. That may be because it's something that would be, um, a state law that's out of the city's jurisdiction. In the past, the city has done resolutions supporting, um, the state to take certain action on items. But, um, as we said before, there's some items that we just wouldn't be, couldn't vote on or couldn't enact here. Um, Councilmember Rivera, did you wanna, did you have something to add?
Uh, yes, um, there are certain things that are actionable, and there are other things that are not. I think you mentioned one was the registry. Uh, that's understandable. However, we should, uh, begin to do something so something is actually happening during our recess. So when we come back in September, we're not behind. So if Council President would like to do something. Before we go into recess and give it to the Law Department some direction. Perhaps so they can start working on this at least while we're in recess.
Well, um, um, sorry, Mr. Chair. Is that all right? So there, uh, we would have to have, I mean, I'm get the, I'm going to file the mo, file the resolution. I know that there are some items that, um, several of my colleagues want to bring forward. In today's special session, but we already had it written. So I do believe that we will probably quickly have another special session. Um, to be able to deal with the things that my colleagues have asked for, and possibly this, um, to, to be able to get the. Our Corporation Counsel to opine on what has been presented to us.
All right. The motion.
I think Councilmember Scanlon is trying to get your attention.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Council President, for pointing that out, I appreciate it. Um, you know, we're entertaining, uh, we are not actually entertaining a law today, as, as the, the Council President said. Um, something would have to come before the body, so I won't go into great detail about any of this, but. Um, I just want to be clear that we're considering drafting a law. Requiring officers to intervene should the behavior of an officer be detrimental to the member of, of the public. Or quite frankly, another officer. And let me say, I am absolutely in favor of addressing that situation, ensuring, and ensuring that our officers. Not just are required to do so, but feel empowered to intervene. In those situations, knowing that they will neither be ostracized nor disciplined for their actions. Um, I think it's extremely important that we put something like that into play and on the books here in the city of Buffalo. However, when referencing to a potential law like this as Cario's law and actually naming it. Um, we are using as a basis. One event involving. Um, a former officer who has brought this to the, to the council. Um, and not just an event where it involved one officer, but, um, more than a half dozen officers in the, uh, event in, in its entirety. And this one person has been kind of allowed to steer the narrative about that event in particular. Um, there are. As I mentioned during a meeting last week. There are incredible discrepancies around what happened that evening. Um, and we've had other council members. I've had other council members reference that they are. Um. They would like to see the past of the other his, the, the history, the disciplinary history of the other, uh, other officers involved. And I think if we're go, if they want to see that, and they're basing that as part of the argument, we need to see everyone's history that was involved in the situation. Um, we have, um. A situation now where, again. This law should absolutely be looked at, and I think it has tremendous merit. But when we go the route of using the basis of this one particular incident. And I think all facts, all factors need to be, um, taken into consideration. We've had other council members today talk about granting, um, pensions and full pensions and all of that. And again, when the council is going to be asked if we have the authority. To take action upon it, we have to have all. The, the information that is germane to that particular incident. And those officers pass, so, um, I'm going to be filing something with the council that is bringing, um, all that information to the council. So that moving forward, we can all make an informed decision. Um, and that we are not just allowing, uh, members of the public or other officers, whether they be current officers or past officers. To try and steer the narrative about the incident or any of the officers involved, including Ms. Horn. So, um, I just, moving forward, um, everyone can look for all the information that I'll be filing surrounding that incident and the officers involved, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think Councilmember Wyatt is trying to get your attention.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, here, my colleague, and I understand, I think we talked about this before. Um, I think the one officer who was convicted. Um, speaks volumes. I, I don't think we have to go look at everybody's background. I think what happened is a man was saved, his life was saved. And we seen that if other officers would have stepped, stepped up like she did, uh, Mr. Floyd would be alive today. Um, so again, you know, we take that situation. And we say that incident, we want to look at everybody that was there. Well, I think the, the clearest, uh, clearest understanding for that incident is that there's a man that's alive. And one of the officers who was involved. Has a checkered background, I'm going to use the word checker, but I can say it's, you know, some other words, but I say a checkered background. That officer has been convicted. So I don't think we need to do a, a great deal of background check on the other individuals. We have an individual who is now a convicted felon who is collecting their pension. Who is collecting their pension. And the woman who stood up. And did the right thing has been left out in the cold. And again, as I said before, I think this is simple as black and white, unfortunately. I'm gonna say it just like it is, there was a legacy of racism some years ago. I think that legacy still exists today. And sometimes you want to hide behind things and say, okay, yeah, things have gotten better, but not to the extent that this woman has been made whole. I think that we have, still have a ways to go. Um, I think that we need to make some changes, um, collectively. I support full police reform, and I'm not talking about a contract. Cutting around the edges, I think you need to start all over, because there's too many things in there. That continues the same culture that we experienced decades ago today. I think that the, the contract needs to be overhauled, just like the governor has said, he wants significant changes. In our approach to policing. And I support significant changes, not just cutting across the edges, not just, um, eliminating fees and charges. I'm talking about significant ways of looking at how do we hire, how do we investigate? All those things must take place. If we are really talking about real reform, not just piecemeal reform. Piecemeal reform does not get us to the point that we want to get as a nation. What the nation is founded on, that everyone has rights, that everyone is respected. I want to see that reform, and looking at the other individuals in the situation that Ms. Cario Horn was in, um, some fourteen years ago. Does her no justice, but the individual who was a part of that conversation is not a convicted felon, felon. That, I think that's enough to be said. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Pro temp Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, when we're looking at this issue, and whether it's Cario's law or the possibility of. The common council having some authority and restoring pension time or doing anything with regard to the pension. Um, facts matter. And. Right now, we are basing our discussions. On one person's side of an incident that took place. All I'm asking for is for everyone to look at before we make any decisions is all of the facts. Um, Council, one, Councilmember Wyatt mentioned that, um, a life was saved. Um, I read the arbitration ruling, and there's more than a half dozen officers. Who state. Things that are in direct opposition to Ms. Horn. So all I'm saying is that we need to look at all the facts that are in play. And again, now my colleague just referenced. A police officer's. Other issues surrounding a police officer. And I think if we are looking at, uh, an officer and trying to do something, that we should be looking at all the officers. And again, this arbitration ruling. Um, actions taken in the past, because we are taking someone's, we are taking someone's word for what took place. During one incident when there were more than a half dozen officers involved. Thank you.
This is Assistant Corporation Counsel Karen Gordon, if I may just shortly ask that, um, council members, uh, try to. Uh, keep the discussion very generic as possible. Um, given that uh, we're not a hundred percent sure whether or not we might um, foresee litigation in this matter. Um, upcoming um, litigation in this matter. So if we can keep our discussion very generic, um, that would be very helpful to keep the city on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to, I would just like to add, I think the item we're talking about right now is um, the six points that were mentioned earlier, duty to intervene, failure to intervene, protection of officers, punish, punishment if you provide to, to intervene and other items. So if we can stick to that, I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to talk on that. If not, I, all right, guess we do. Councilmember Glumbek and Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to say that I too support the concept of this law. Um, I think that you have to, you know, uh, as uh, some of my colleagues spoke and especially for those that have a history in the police department, um, that you do have to have something, policy, law, whatever, um, so that officers can feel protected um, doing the right things. Um, and so I support the concept of this law. Of course, the devil will be in the details, but in theory, I support the concept uh, completely. Um, the other thing is, is that, you know, we, we need to realize that we have to base our decisions on law. Um, and it's very difficult because there are times when my emotions get the best of me, surprise, surprise. Those of you that know me will find that hard to believe, but you know, I have to overcome my personal emotional and feelings over certain issues. And I need to look at facts, I need to look at the law, I need to look at what is doable and what is not doable. Um, and then make decisions based on that. Um, so I want, uh, I'm going to commend uh, councilmember Scanlon for, you know, his comments as well. I mean, we'd need to look at the entire picture and not just let the emotional feelings that we have um, uh, cloud ourselves. Uh, I was, uh, I watched the press conference with uh, um, Mayor Brown last month, I think it was at the beginning of June. And there was a very different narrative that I heard at that press conference. Um, I'm going to go back fourteen years ago, ago or so. And I remember when there were some issues that were in front of us and I had the opportunities to read files. And it was a very different narrative back then as well. So you know, my concern is, is that, you know, I want to be able to do legally and lawfully, what is the right thing? I want to know what really happened. Um, I want to be fair in my judgments. But until all of the facts are out, and part of the reason that I believe uh, the argument was for repealing fifty A was so that we would be able to see files for everyone uh, that worked for the police department. And I have no problem putting a whole bunch of files in front of us and being able to look at them. But the reality of the situation is, is that we have to legally look at what happened and not let our emotions cloud us over, but legally, what happened, what was the process and was it fair? Um, so uh, in that regard, you know, I'm uh, as I mentioned, I'm supporter of the concept of the law and then also of the truth being told. Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you. Um, in honor of Congressman John William Lewis, um, I like good trouble. And when we start talking about facts and information, it's easy for people to talk about facts and information when there's something the comfort of their justice. Um, this woman has been without her justice for fourteen years. And then we take the information or the knowledge or the testimony of some officers, if we looked at their background and we opened up their jackets, and unfortunately, the, the union is contesting fifty A, saying that some of the information may not be accurate. Wow, how does that happen? Some of the information may not be accurate. However, we take and trust the words of officers. However, this council was deceived about a week or so ago, a couple of weeks ago, from the police department. So to say that I'm going to give all the trust and legitimacy that we got an honest statement from them, I'm not going to do. However, we want to go into the full details of this matter, but with the full details of the matter brought forth from Mrs. Carriell Horn, we want to go through that now fourteen years later after she's been out in the cold without her pension and those other things. So you know, it's easy for people to have this um, Monday, Monday morning quarterback thought process when it didn't happen in the very beginning. And again, that's part of the systemic racism that can, that happens not only in our nation, but in our city. I don't believe she was given the benefit of the doubt. From her testimony and information that I read, it seems as though there was something there. And then I, unfortunately, I happened to see a video and when she was walking through um, uh, the city court and there were officers who were jiding her, fired, fired. I don't think that that was someone who got the benefit of the doubt from those officers. And so to say that I'm going to trust officers in this particular case with this particular situation, I think we would all be foolish. I would say Pluto still exists if that's what we would do. But at the end of the day, I hope that we can do as a council, and I hope that we have the authority to make her whole, and if it's zero to thirty-two years, then that shit shouldn't be. Because at the end of the day, this woman has suffered. And nobody cares about her suffering. And I don't hear the PBA standing up for her. They actually went against her. I thought the PBA was supporting officers, but they didn't actually support her. So at the end of the day, I hope that the majority of my colleagues would see fit to support this particular item in front of us so that this, we can begin the process to have officers intervene to save the safety of our residents and also so they can go home safe. I concur with Council President. We want every officer to go home safe. We do not want any officer to be harmed. However, we do not want citizens to be harmed as well. This is a, I think this is the first step. There's other things that we need to do, but I support this first step. And the, the, all the other uh, uh, window dressing, I think is unnecessary, but whatever the council chooses, it was, uh, uh, what I, I will try to support. Thank you.
Closing remarks from, well, Council President Pridgen.
Just want to try to get this train back on the track so that something happens or doesn't happen. What is before this council or this committee right now is a submitted document with what I will say is a suggestion of a law. It is not about the investigation of the incident that happened fourteen years ago. I think Councilmember Rivera said in the beginning, remove all of that. And what I am very, very glad to hear is almost every comment from my colleagues to say they support the law. That, that's, at the end of the day, we, we gotta get something done. And what I don't, what I hope does not happen because every colleague that spoke almost, I believe, said I support a law, a duty to intervene. And my greatest fear is we are going to get sidetracked with trying to investigate. If somebody wants to investigate the incident, they have to do something different than, than what resolutions I have in front of me uh, put, have put in front of this council. Because I see no uh, resolution to investigate the incident. It is talking about where we going with the process going forward, whether there would be a law. One, two, three, four. Right now, if I, if I had to count, there are five, at least five council members today who have said they support the duty to intervene law. We got what, whatever the name is, at least five have said that, which says to me publicly that there is enough votes on this council from what I have heard to date to begin, and, and I promise you, I just uh, uh, told Mark, begin the process to have Corporation Council give us a draft of the duty to intervene. It would probably mention there, the incident, doesn't have to, at the end of the day. The end of the day, it's about protecting citizens, protecting police. So I want us to be very clear about that. At least five today have said, I support a law of the duty to intervene. Now, I won't, I'm not, I'm not going to get into this other portion because I've made it plain that I, I, and, and, and now hearing Councilmember uh, the, the Scanlon, if he says everybody, probably if it came that way, what I was concerned in the past is to pull out Ms. Horn's record solely as if that would make a difference on the duty to intervene law. Hearing him say everybody, everybody who was there, that, that's something separate that could be done through a resolution that uh, he brings forth, and then we have that discussion. But right now, if we get lost and we get lost in what happened that day, what it's saying is what should happen in the future shouldn't happen if something on that day is different than what we were told. And so again, I heard five and I'm, I don't want to use that phrase. And I'm moving forward to ask Corporation Council to draft a law of the duty to intervene. It'll be filed before Friday. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. I couldn't agree with you more that it's absolutely outstanding that we see so many council members today ready to move, it appears, on a duty, duty to intervene law. Because as I said earlier, um, the policy is great. And maybe internally, we have officers that are required to intervene. But in actual law will absolutely lead to them being empowered to do so. Knowing that they will not be ostracized or disciplined for their actions. But I don't, the one thing is says you want to remove that incident that is kind of being kicked around here. I don't think we can if we're talking about naming a law after someone who is involved in the exact type incident if we don't have all the facts surrounding that incident. Councilmember Wyatt mentioned he wants to give that officer the benefit of the doubt and he's heard her testimony. But has he heard everyone else's testimony? And that's why I'm saying I want to file all the information surrounding that in, that, that incident. And I, I mean, I've heard council members today flip flop from saying they don't want to hear about other people's backgrounds, other officers' backgrounds and their history. And then ten minutes later saying, all right, I want to see everyone's history. And that's all I've said from the beginning. If we're going to do this for one officer, if, if we have people that are coming from the public are saying, we want you to look into this officer, I want to do it for anyone that it comes to this council. I don't think this council should be cherry picking officers who we're going to look into their background for, that we should be doing it for everyone. Um, again, across the board so that it doesn't, so, so it doesn't appear that the council is playing favorites. Um, I think we should be looking at everyone's moving forward. And again, I don't think you can remove that incident from this particular discussion if we are looking to name it after someone involved in that incident. And that again, is why I'll just be filing all the information surrounding that incident. Thank you.
Thank you. And in conclusion, I just want to mention to anyone who's watching, um, and the, the council chief of staff said there have been a lot of comments on this. Um, just want to let everyone know today, we're talking about, we're a resolution. We are, the council president has indicated that he's going to introduce an actual law for this body to vote on that includes the duty to intervene. So we're not voting on that today. This was discussed today. We had people, we had guests talk on that item today. Um, and we'll likely vote on an actual law at, probably at some point in September, possibly after that in October, but it sounds like at some point in September. So the, this legislative body goes on recess during the month of August. So there won't be any other items on this um, until at least September. And thank you everyone for your calls, emails and comments on this topic. Thank you. Majority Leader, do we have a motion?
Motion to table?
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Boland.
Item number three, letter regarding state legislation for Buffalo Police Department residency.
Items open?
This item is open. Um, is there someone specific who wanted to start the conversation on this?
Mr. Chair, I think I, I submitted it, it was a letter to me um, from Majority Leader Crystal People Stowe. Um, we had a little discussion about this, I think, in the uh, full council. Um, I have been informed that this probably will not need a home rule message. That was one of the reasons that I asked for her letter. And this is about legislation uh, that is being discussed in Albany for Buffalo Police Department residency uh, for new police officers, uh, which I fully one hundred percent uh, support. Um, but uh, after discussion, this can be received uh, and filed. It was actually a basis in case there needed to be a home rule message from the council. Motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number four, statement regarding injury while on duty.
Motion to table, items four and five.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number six, Carriell Horn pension inquiry.
Items open.
This item is open. Corporation Council, you are invited to speak on this.
Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon, I do believe that we've been given an extension uh, after speaking to uh, Council President sometime last week in order for us to get this um, ready uh, as an opinion to the body sometime early August.
Mr. Chair.
Council President.
Um, actually, it's not an extension. The resolution calls for August fourth. So um, I had in the meeting, um, our previous meeting asked if we could get it by today, but in fairness to Corporation Council um, and to uh, the Corporation Council's schedule, it calls for August fourth for written opinion. But just so that those who are listening and um, uh, Councilmember Wyatt and Wingo actually talked about this earlier. Um, the fact is, this is a resolution that I put forward to ask the question because we do have the public uh, saying, um, and, and many of us who have said, if we could um, restore uh, her, uh, Carriell Horn's pension, or if we could make her whole, um, that we should. But at the end of the day, we need to know, can we? So that when those from the public and even ourselves are saying, this is what should happen. Law is law and we have to know the facts of the law uh, to be able to make that decision. And so we will have, we do expect there to be a written decision. Um, and unless there is some type of information of um, that cannot be made public. For instance, if there was a lawsuit and we were uh, told that we could not make that public and we'll get that from Corporation Council. Um, but um, up until that, this will be public information. And I didn't ask for it so that we could hide under it. I asked for the opinion of the law department of whether this body could restore Carriell Horn so that the public and this body would have the facts. I'm okay waiting for the date of August fourth, uh, in which we originally asked it for, and I thank Corporation Council uh, for their cooperation.
Motion would be to table. Majority Leader Rivera.
One question, does the request uh, to Corporation Council limit it to only whether we can restore her or pay a pension? Does it also inquire us to, who can, if anyone? Uh, because I'd like to know not if we can't do it, is it possible for, I don't know who else has the power. Does the mayor have the power? Does the comptroller have the power? Does the state attorney general have, who has the power? Assuming we don't have the power, is there anyone out there that has the power to, if determined to make something that's wrong, right? Is there somebody out there that has that power?
Mr. Uh, Chair, uh, to, to answer the question, I'm reading the resolution and it doesn't simply say, it says, request a written opinion by Corporation Council to be sent to the council about the city of Buffalo. So that would be the council or the administration. It doesn't in this one, uh, Majority Leader call for who? It is a very good point, of which we had brought that up before because that's a very, very good point of does anybody have that authority? Um, and I know it isn't in here, but I'm sure I would ask that Corporation Council
Um, and I know it isn't in here, but I'm sure I would ask that Corporation Council in their response to us. Would would be able to opine, is that some Corporation Council in in your response that you were planning on doing?
Yes, most certainly, we are planning to look at um any possibility, if there's any out there, we will also bring that to the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Motion is to table by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Item seven, inquiry into residency requirement practices.
I think we've lost Majority Leader Rivera for the moment, this item is. Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Motion to open?
Motion to open, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
I believe HR was going to be on.
Yes, sir, we're joined by Willie McLaughlin from HR.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Willie McLaughlin. Regarding the issue of residence.
Mr. Chair, if I can give some background.
Council President.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, so I filed this uh resolution inquiry into residency requirement practices. Um, after we have heard in including from our Majority Leader, uh, when it comes to uh police and police being uh possibly being. Residents of the city of Buffalo, we know that we have other offices that are supposed to be um living in the city of Buffalo. And my, the reason I brought it up is because if we're going to talk about police, um, it's, there are other. Um, you know, employees that should be part of the city of Buffalo are supposed to, and so before. Before, can't can't lift up both hands, and before we go into the police, are we already policing who's on the books? Um, who are supposed to be on, and so what we've asked um human, the human resource to come on. Is to tell us the policies, the procedures, and then how they investigate uh if someone is not. We know that we just got an inquiry um publicly sent to us um about one of the commissioners. Well, if it, who who in the city does the investigation, what kind of investigation occurs so that uh we know as a council?
Yes, good afternoon, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
So for rest, for all positions do require residence, we do uh have procedures in place where we collect proof of residence. When applications, when applicants first come on for city employment. And uh there is, I can send a list to you certainly, but we collect a variety of items. Driver's license, utility bills, bank statements, and once they process and and are appointed. Then they will fall under the uh, under the domain of the collective bargaining agreement for the position that they that they uh occupy. For exempt positions, if the same rules apply for everyone, you have to um present proof of residence. From our acceptable list, and then you are processed. If we find that someone is not a resident, they're either disapproved or a resident, if a residence waiver is requested. Then they're getting a certain amount of time in order to establish city residents. And also if we find violators, they are either uh, they are either um investigated. Or they are, we refuse to certify them from the list, or we refuse to appoint them until such time as they can. Provide the requested documentation. Uh, were there other specific questions for our department?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, Mr. Chair, if I may, so what what is the investigation and who does the investigation? If, because if someone starts out in the city of Buffalo, then moves out. What's the investigation?
Well, we we use uh resources that are available to us, we do not have a investigator per se, but we do have uh. People in police and other departments that investigate for us, and we do employ the services of an outside contractor that would. Investigate complaints that someone does not reside in the city when they are required to do so.
And and have we utilized, so that would be an outside contractor, I would assume a. A P I um, or you're saying the police department, I would, do we utilize a P I?
We do have a have a contract with an agency that that performs this service for us.
And that's a contract that is usually in the budget of Human Resources?
Yes, but it's rare, it's rarely used, but we we do use it on occasion when we get these complaints, and when we get, you know, a whistleblower saying this person. Is bragging that they work for the city and don't live in the city, so we use the a tool available to us to investigate such complaints.
And I I don't expect for you to know this answer right off the cuff. Um, it is, we say it's it's um very rarely used, do we very rarely get complaints?
We do very rarely get complaints, I would say not not even five per year.
So if we get five per year, what have, what is the, how often do we utilize this P I?
That, well, whenever we get those, we do pursue it vigorously, we do attempt to collect the documentation or whatever. Evidence he has that the person does not live out, live in the city, and then we uh send it up the chain of command, it's investigated beyond our office. Prob- probably by legal and other departments, but we do, we do pursue every avenue that is available to us. To ensure that residents comply with with our requirements.
So you said probably, you send it up and probably investigated by whom, by another office? Who is the probably? Who, where does it go?
If it is an employee, we would, we would refer it to their department head or to the collective bargaining agreement, because once they are hired. We've already done our vetting process, so we would have to say, say if it's public works, we would, we would say, we have this complaint. This is the evidence that we have, and then and then the department would take it further, and then they, if they request the person to be terminated. We would pursue that means of, you know, whatever the next step would be in the process.
So if that commissioner didn't. Didn't think they should be terminated, do they come, who who holds anybody accountable after that, after you send it up the line?
We still would continue to pursue it until the logical conclusion, we have terminated people. Uh, in the past, when we did have enough evidence that they really didn't reside in the city, and they were supposed to reside in the city. We also have, you know, pursuit of other remedies available to us. Where they would get a fair hearing, where they would get a chance to provide their documentation that they do in fact live where they say they live, so.
So we don't you, we haven't utilized the the P I in a while, would you say? Or we have?
We have within the past year.
And how how did that turn out, was the, and I know we can't go into specifics of persons. But just because if we're talking about police living inside of the city of Buffalo, that's almost 800 employees, will it be just the new ones? So if you're talking about 200, and there's already a resistance. My concern is, is the process that we have right now, can it shoulder? That type of responsibility to ensure that people who work for the city of Buffalo live in the city of Buffalo?
Well, when we, when we process a new police class, we collect a a ton of documentation, so they really. You know, it would be very difficult for them not to be, not to to get on, because they have to present. Uh, the three months prior to the application residence up to the day they are, and that would include bank statements, utility bills. Vehicle insurance. Uh, everything that's, and and we and we have, like I said, we have a mountain of of applicant, of residents in their name or in their. Parents' name for people that are still living at home that they do reside where they say they reside, so. These are the investigative contract that we have, again, is very rare, it's only when something is glaringly. Obvious that the person doesn't reside there, or or when they do the background interviews, people and nobody in the neighborhood knows who the person is or that sort of thing. So we never would have to investigate a full class, it's very rare.
Right, but in in, the person could begin employment in the city of Buffalo and then move out. Um, after they have supplied the documents a year or two later. Uh, can we shoulder that investigation with what we're working with now?
In those instances, it would be the department that would have to pursue it, because once they're on the the department. It becomes the department's responsibility as well as the whatever is covered in the collective bargaining agreement.
Alright, can you uh provide, or somebody from your department provide the policy that says it has to, that it will go to the department? And I'll just tell you why, and I know you didn't write the policy, so I'm just, so that you know I'm not asking you as if you did it. Because my concern is, if I'm a part of a department and the department wants to protect me. The department will be able to protect me, and there had will have been no independent investigation. There will been, have no, been no one who was not attached or have been supervising that person uh who would be responsible. To me, this shouldn't be department level, this should be a separate department. That independently investigates complaints of people not living in the city of Buffalo. And to send it to the departments with no disrespect to departments, those departments are not investigators. And so a commissioner, who is the commissioner of Public Works, and I just pulled that out of the hat because first one. He, that commissioner is not trained to investigate residency. And so we are asking the people who do street sidewalks and everything else. Investigate this complaint against a person who's working for you, who may be doing a good job. Um, it just doesn't pass muster to me to have a department investigate their own. This is part of, uh, and this is not to you again, I I want to make sure, because I'm not combative, I'm just making observations. Uh, this is the same complaint we're getting out of when we talk about public affairs, is police investigating police? Um, and so, so what is, what does Human Resources do? When the department calls back and says, we've solved it, they actually live in the city of Buffalo, what do they have to provide?
They would have to provide all the documentation that, as if they come on as 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 a new employee, all the the. The the utility bills, bank statements, deed mortgage, we would have, we would review that information. But another thing I want to say that all permitted employees do have section 75 rights, uh. You know, prior to termination, so there, you know, we can't just arbitrarily terminate somebody, they would be entitled to their due process. And and oftentimes, departments do come back to us, and they would utilize an outside um contractor to pursue. If if a person, because it's, you know, it's to their benefit too, in order to assure that. We're crossing all the eyes and diagnolities that the person does meet this requirement, that the person does live in the city. And especially when other concerned citizens voice these complaints, they're never taken lightly, we do pursue it to the full extent possible.
Uh, you you just bring up something very interesting, so other departments hire P I's to?
No, I mean, they they would probably come back to civil service, and maybe this time they would have to pay the bill for the contractor rather than us. If, you know, if it's a case where somebody in their department is is, you know, blatantly not living in the city, and they. And we have to investigate the complaint. But it has happened in the past, that we we've done it when the department has, after when we've gotten a complaint. That the person has uh has broken residency.
Um, so this is my last question, because I know we have another meeting to get on. So when a person signs that they live in the city of Buffalo. And then it's found that they don't live in the city of Buffalo. And I, like you said, they have rights and all that, let's say they go through the process and they're found. I- is that signing a government document, is that, would that be considered illegal?
It would be considered, yes, because they do have to sign a statement that that verifies under penalty of perjury that they do reside at the address that they claim to reside, so. We could legally pursue it to the full extent of the law, yes.
And do we?
We have, but I can't cite, I can't remember a specific case right now.
Yeah, and I think this is my concern about this this process, and especially um when we hear people saying. Police should live in the city of Buffalo, I'm not sure if the process that we have in place right now. Um, would would complement that or hurt that, or just, because I I'm not too sure that this process of having. Commissioners investigate their own people, so I I can, can you provide for this council, like I said, the policy? Uh, because that's what we do, is we we write policy. And um so that we are able to to take a look at that, and possibly, I'm not saying that we need to change it. But I think we first need to understand it, um, and then if there's some changes to be able to work. With Human Resources Administration in this council uh to ensure that we have um the proper protocols in place. Because at the end of the day, if some departments are calling and calling back, and they may get a P I or they may not. To me, um, this this needs to be very streamlined uh so that we can ensure that those who are being paid by the city live in the city, thank you.
Thirdly, we will put forward the policy to you, yes.
I I would ask them, Mr.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Thank you, Chair, ju- just a quick question, um, Mr. McLaughlin, we we were. Basically operating on a fee for service with the private investigator. Um, do you know what it costs every time we employ their services, is it a flat rate? Or is it based on hours they've worked?
I am, I believe it's a flat rate, but I will have to have to uh get the uh information and forward that to you.
Yeah, can you please forward that to us, because I'd be interested in looking at how much we are spending on it. A few years back, I filed a resolution asking um civil service to look into residency inspectors that the city used to have. Um, and I'd like to see what the cost of that would be versus what we're paying on a fee for service basis. And compare the two moving forward in response to this issue that the Council President's brought up, so. If you could provide us that information, I'd be, I'd really appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, certainly.
Motion is to table? Motion to table by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Item number eight, request for information, armed guard services, City Hall.
This item's open?
This item is open, this is sponsored by Councilmember Wyatt. Um, Councilmember Wyatt, has everything been addressed, or did you still have something on this?
I got, I got three items, I'm still waiting for um date stamp, copies of proposals. Minutes of April 18th meeting, including names and title of participants. And statements summary of the process of RFPs, um, I haven't received that as yet.
So would you like to table this for the moment, or?
Um, sure.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Take from the table, item 12?
This, take.
Mr. Chair, there was also a request to additionally take item number 17 from the table as well.
Motion to take items 12 and 17 from the table.
Seconded by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 12, Commission on Citizens Rights and Community Relations Annual Report.
Items open?
Council President.
Did you faint? Look, real brief, and and by the way, we've discussed already 17 and so many other platforms, I really don't need to go back to it. Uh, but on 12, just briefly, um, I have reached out to the uh Commission on Citizens Rights and Community Relations. They are writing their report, um, he he needed to um. Uh, to do a few other things to it, and and also he had not met with his board, so I would want that report to be approved by the board. And so I'm okay with hearing that report when we come back uh after resource recess, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion to table items 12 and 17 as well?
Seconded by Councilmember Wingo.
No other items, motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.